All right, good evening, everybody. This is, for those of you tuning in at home expecting to see the Selectment, I'm sorry to disappoint, but their meeting has already taken place and concluded. This is the pre-town meeting for the special town meeting to be held Tuesday, October 29th, one week from tonight, 7:00 PM, at the Middle School. We will start on time, assuming a quorum, which we have been fortunate enough to get lately. My name is John Donahue, I am the Town Moderator. To my right, your left, is Dwayne Wheeler, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Dwayne will have some comments, brief comments, on the financial state or condition of the town that will sort of tee up this pre-town meeting for the special town meeting. The special town meeting is a mechanism at the town's disposal, for those that are wondering why we do a special every year in the fall. We didn't use to, up until about, I guess, 2000, 2001, with the formation of the Capital Planning Committee. The previous process would be to approve all fiscal year, well pending fiscal year articles at the May Annual Town Meeting, but we were sort of handcuffed as a town as the financial condition of the town was not really known until the fall, Dwayne, after free cash is certified. So, one of the recommendations coming out of the Capital Planning Committee back in the early 2000s was to separate the two functions, to do the administrative budget zoning articles in the spring, and to do the capital articles in the fall. Of course, anytime you schedule a special town meeting, it behooves us all to put all the business before the town that's pending on the special town meeting warrant, so you will see non-capital items on the fall town meeting warrant, which is completely appropriate. That's, what special town?
Can you speak?
Louder than that, really? I'm not sure I can. Okay. So, that's the purpose of the special town meeting in the fall. And again, it is October 29th, one week from tonight, at 7:00 PM. Dwayne, do you have some brief comments on the financial condition of the town?
Yes, thank you. I am happy to see some people here, thank you for coming, I'm glad this pre-town meeting doesn't require a quorum. The town overall, as far as the Finance Committee is concerned, is in good financial shape, thanks primarily to our managers. And this evening, as far as the warrant goes, in summary, we have articles for raising appropriate in the amount of $220,000 and some change. I can assure you that the projections and all that we have and have received from the Selectmen and Randy assure us that we do not have a problem with appropriating $220,000. The free cash articles total $314,000, and that cash has been certified, so that there's no question about that. The remaining articles are transferred from other accounts, and they total $533,700. The biggest element of that is $300,000, which is on the warrant to buy a new ambulance, to be transferred from the ambulance receipts account, which is more than adequate to handle the $300,000, I'm happy to tell you. The Finance Committee, along with the Capital Committee, we both recommend all of the moneyed articles here, including Articles 17 and 18, which do not have the recommendation printed on them. 17 is to transfer $65,000 from the overlay surplus to repair a 1996 pumper. We are in favor of that. And Article 18 transfers from free cash $57,000 to buy a large dump truck. So, in summary, I think that this town is lucky, or smart, either one, but nevertheless, our financial condition looks good to the Finance Committee, which I am happy to report. And that's the best summary I have, John.
Thank you, Dwayne. So, without further ado, we'll get right into the warrant. I will, I'm not going to read every article, I will summarize every article if there are questions in the audience. Please just get my attention, otherwise we'll move on to the next article. We are joined by several department heads, committee members, elected officials, so we certainly have plenty of firepower here to answer any questions. If any of the department heads want to take this opportunity to tee up an article that they are sponsoring, please just step up to the microphone and we'll have at it. So, Article 1 is a transfer from the bond premiums account, the sum of $23,820 for the payment of fiscal year 14 debt service, of which 17-8 is debt excluded, just shy of $6,000 non-debt excluded. This is part of the $9 million face six sewer borrowing, and it's explained in a little further detail in the article. Questions on Article 1?
I have a question.
Ma'am.
John Desley, Cynthia Drive. I'm wondering why that non-debt excluded, the 25%, is a betterment figure? Why wouldn't that be deposited directly to the sewer betterment fund?
It's coming from the sewer betterment fund. It's a transfer going to the betterment fund, from the bond premiums.
So, it's going to the sewer betterment fund, the 25%?
Yes, yes, because it's going to, remember that debt service is 75-
Yes.
Taxpayers and 25 from the betterments, yes.
So, that's going to reduce our taxes, the 75% of that miserly $23,000. But the $5,955 is the 25% due back to the people, I mean, to the betterment fund.
Yeah, to the betterment fund, which will in turn eventually address the debt service.
Yeah, at the far end. But in the meantime, they're short there, so that's why.
No, a betterment fund is fine, remember, we discussed this in length, but basically, the debt service goes until-
The mortgage is paid.
Yes, and it's 20,028, so it's 15 years forward, so that I can assure you that all projections say that the betterment fund is adequate to meet the 25% obligation in the future. It's going to outlast me, nevertheless.
I'm going to call you one of these nights.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm sorry, I need to ask-
It's a good question.
Article 2 is $13,662 to pay prior year bills.
I have a question on that.
Ma'am?
When we have free cash, either free cash at the end of the year, or overlay surplus, which is essentially the same thing, the bills are paid and there's money left over, is that not correct?
No, I'll ask Gordon to address the overlay surplus, but I think of overlay surplus as being a bad debt reserve against future taxes due. And when the reserve for a particular year now exceeds the outstanding taxes for that year, it becomes a surplus, as I understand it. Gordon, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Well, just an easy way to explain in layman's terms is, we put aside so much money each year, the assessors have appropriated from the town meeting, so much money each year for plausible abatement requests that are granted from taxpayers who may have a disagreement on their assessment, there may be an error in the assessment, and we do an investigation and a study of that, and if we find that their request is correct, there's adjustments made, and then it comes from that account. Once we hear all the cases, once everything is settled for that particular year, the balance is then returned back to the town. And we have, there's two articles here, where we're transferring money back to town expenses from the abatement or the overlay account that we don't need anymore, because those particular fiscal years are complete.
Right. Thank you, Gordon.
All right, so back to, we were on Article 2, the $13,662. I take issue with the fact that you're asking us to raise and appropriate money when you gave all that money away under free cash. Why weren't the past bills paid?
As I understand it, it's just a timing issue. The bills came in subsequent to the fiscal years, and the fiscal year stays open until effectively we are paid, so that-
Well, they're due to be paid, and there's free cash available, and you've given it away. Why didn't-
Well, we're not giving the free cash away. Remember, the free cash is used primarily for capital expenditures. You remember, we deferred the capital expenditures, as John said, around 2000, 2001, to the fall when the free cash has been certified. The free cash, you remember, are balances and revenues pertaining to 2013. The reason appropriate pertains to the fiscal year 2014, they're two different years.
Well, what I'm understanding is saying-
Is why we did-
Prior year bills.
Right, the prior year bills.
So, why wouldn't that come out of free cash? I don't get it.
Well, just because effectively, we only had $314,000, and we had capital expenditures in excess, so we had to pick the best use for the free cash. And in our opinion, the warrant as it's presented to you was our best judgment on the use of the free cash. That's the best answer I can give you. You could have paid the $13,000 and said, "I'm sorry, but we can't have a new server, we can't have a new dump truck because of this," while we had a window in the reason appropriate that could adequately handle this small amount.
I understand that's your judgment, but it's still-
And it was a judgment call, but I think it was the correct one. Well, obviously, when they presented it, if I thought it wasn't correct-
I understand that.
Yes.
But I still feel like we shouldn't be encumbered additionally for last year's bills. It just seems like that should have come off the top, and then maybe we didn't have a full $85,000 for somebody else, we had to reduce it by $13,000.
Right.
So, I don't-
Well, I can't, I argue with your opinion, you certainly are entitled to that opinion. I will discuss this in future meetings and say, "This is a recommendation on your part." But traditionally, the prior year bills have been handled this way.
Well-
Because it's a small amount.
I'm thinking about it, that it maybe should be handled first.
Well-
And it's my suggestion, not that I have any fool, but-
Well, I certainly appreciate your opinion, as you know.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, speaking up.
Article 3, the city town will vote to raise and appropriate $40,000 for special town council services. Article 4, the city town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $19,442 to fund fiscal year 2013 contract settlement with OPEIU, which I believe is the, is it the Clerks Union, Randy? No?
Opposite professional employees.
Oh, yes.
Sometimes called a clerk.
Yes, sorry. No offense intended. We're taking the action relative thereto, and you see that listed by department within the article. Questions on Article 4? Article 5, to raise and appropriate $40,000 towards establishing central dispatch for the town. Comments or questions on that? I see we have both chiefs here, if that's, any questions there at the ready? I believe we've got a request for an explanation.
We had a question from the audience, apparently, on central dispatch. I'm not sure exactly what you wanted to know in particular.
I wanted you to explain why we need that. I've heard the explanation, I agree with it, but I wanted to share it.
Okay. We believe that in terms of efficiencies and providing that dispatching service, it's going to increase, and also, long-term, there's going to be a savings for the town.
Because?
More consolidated services.
Yeah, and you're going to relieve four firemen from having to do the dispatch.
It's one per shift, it's not four. It's four total, but not four at one time.
Yeah, but I don't know if everybody understood that, that's all I was asking you to clarify.
Okay, did that answer your question?
No, I don't have a question, other than letting the people know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Article 6, the city town will raise and appropriate $50,000 to the general stabilization account. This is an annual article, I believe, Dwayne, right?
Yes, yes. A general stabilization account now stands at a little over $1 million. This is the savings account for the town. We feel that it should be at $1,500,000, which would be around 5% of our total bill. Unfortunately, we don't have availability beyond the $50,000 at this time, but I can promise you that we on the Finance Committee will try very hard every year to build this stabilization account up to the neighborhood of $1,400,000, $1,500,000, although right now, I'm happy that it's over $1 million, in honesty. If you look in the newspaper articles on our neighboring towns, you'll find that we're luckier than most that have built this stabilization account, this savings account, over time. So, that we are recommending this article.
Very good. Article 7, to transfer from the overlay surplus account $14,102 for the purpose of abating property taxes assessed to locations unknown, held in tax title. Questions on Article 7? Article 8, raising and appropriating $2,928 to fire department personnel expense for settlement of the chief's contract. Questions on Article 8? Article 9, transfer from ambulance receipts account the sum of $7,096 for EMT wages and EMT stipends due to the settlement of contract negotiations, or taking the action relative Article 10, raising and appropriating the sum of $31,143 to fire department personnel expenses due to settlement of contract negotiations. Questions on Article 10? Article 11, to transfer from ambulance receipts account the sum of $1,689 to the ambulance personnel expenses due to settlement of contract negotiations. Questions on Article 11? What you're seeing here on these last few articles is the appropriation power given to the town meeting. So, anytime that funds are needed, it is only town meeting that can appropriate funds. So, this is, what you're seeing here is, for lack of a better word, the bookkeeping behind the scenes of funding particular accounts in order to meet the town's obligations. So, a bit of housekeeping, but from time to time, these housekeeping articles can grow into a size or a magnitude that warrants discussion on the floor. So, we're always prepared for questions if people have them on these types of articles. Article 12, we're amending the Rainham general bylaws, in particular referencing the warrant, which is that which more or less warns the town residents, town voters, of the town meeting action that's proposed. And there's some housekeeping here and some updating, going from seven public places where the warrant is posted to six, eliminating Slips Cape Way Marine and Gilmore Hall, and adding the Middle School as a posting location, changing the date of, or the deadline for insertion for articles, some housecleaning on the governing body, for lack of a better word, which, that's probably not a good word for it, but that with, that committee that is responsible for the formation of the warrant, in this case, the Finance Committee is noted. So, that's pretty much Article 12. Questions on Article 12? Article 13 is a transfer from free cash $80,000 to purchase two police vehicles. So, we're starting now to get into the part of the warrant where the capital items are going to start coming up, one after another here. So, the first one is purchase of two police vehicles. Questions on Article 13? Comments? Article 14, again from free cash, $10,000 for a new computer server for the police Comments or questions on 14? 15, transfer from ambulance receipts reserved account the sum of $300,000 to purchase a new Class 1 ambulance and equipment, or taking the action relative thereto. Questions or comments on Article 15? I know this is one that the ambulance receipts reserved account is, I guess, for lack of a better word, Dwayne, self-sufficient, these are the-
Self-funding.
Self-funding.
It's the monies that are collected for the use of the ambulance, so that it effectively doesn't affect the tax rate. It's money that is collected and put in the reserve to self-fund the ambulance service.
I know that there's also some, Chief, I'm going to assume it's still done this way, but there are also some wages paid out of that account as well, right?
Yes.
It is, yep. Right, so, yep. This is one, I think this is a good story for the town. It's clearly, it's clearly been proven that the ambulance service not only pays for itself, but also offers outstanding service to town residents. Would that be fair to say, Chief? I don't think you're going to disagree with me, your hire. Article 16, transfer from the fire alarm account $37,000 to purchase the chief's vehicle. Questions on 16? 17, transfer from overlay surplus $65,000 to refurbish the 1996 E1 pumper, let's say, fire pumper. Dwayne mentioned this earlier, you do not see recommended under the article, but it is indeed recommended?
Yes, we recommended it subsequent to the-
Yes, going to print, right. Questions on 17? Article 18, transfer from free cash $57,000 for what appears to be a dump truck. It looks also like it will serve as a plow, would that be accurate, Roger? Dump truck and plow combination. Questions on 18, again, to reiterate, that is also recommended by the Finance Committee. Article 19 is a transfer from free cash $85,000 to use as a partial payment for the purchase of one new street sweeper. And then you'll see Article 20 will be a transfer from an existing account, an existing stabilization account called the Street Sweeper Stabilization Account, which was previously funded with a similar amount, $85,000. In between those two articles, Article 19 and Article 20, you've got $170,000, which, Roger, I would assume would cover the entire cost of the sweeper?
It would.
So, I think that's an example of the town putting money away for future use, earmarking it for a particular item. So, again, good budgeting. Article 21, raise and appropriate $23,000, and also to transfer from free cash $82,000, totaling $105,000 for the replacement of a 36-year-old steel roof on the highway department, office and garage. Questions on Article 21? Mr. Stolti, this was an article from 2001.
It has been, and we ran out of buckets, I guess. But the issue is, it's finally getting addressed, and the one thing that you need to think about, we had, hopefully, we will have a bid, we've got the bid out, and it's due on the 25th, and so we will have a, hopefully, a good number that we can submit to town meeting if it changes from the number that we have here, up or down, but hopefully, it will be down. We have had an estimate at under $100,000. So, it's our hope that this number will go down in town meeting, but we won't know until after our bids are collected on the 25th.
Very good. Any further questions on the new roof, Article 21? Article 22, amending the zoning bylaws, permitted uses in residential districts, residential aid districts, and it goes on to talk about, exclude from the definition of foul from this point forward will be roosters, peacocks and guinea hens. I think I've got that, I think I believe I'm reading that right?
Yes.
Yes?
Right.
It's very controversial. Questions on 22? I was kind of hoping nobody would ask. I have no idea. Mr. Stolti, you're from, aren't you from Missouri?
It's more like a pheasant.
Like a pheasant?
But it's domestic, and it's a chicken.
Otherwise known as a chicken.
Otherwise known as a chicken, but it has qualities of a pheasant.
Okay.
It's got a lot of color to it.
Okay.
And it squawks.
Why did I know you would know that? Article 23, amending the town of Rainham zoning bylaws, Section 668, signs not requiring your permits, by adding the following section, and there's a number of new classifications of signs that will not require permits, things such as temporary municipal school, nonprofit signs, which advertise municipal school and nonprofit events, and there's some verbiage in there about the size of the sign and the length of time which it may be up. Questions on Article 23? Article 24, staying with the zoning, adding the following definitions to Article 10, and it talks about debilitating medical condition. I believe this is related to marijuana, Randy? I'm going to go to you on this one, not because of the, don't tie in the marijuana, as the town administrator.
Actually, I'm the new town planner.
Oh, excellent. Save me.
Mr. Moderator, Article 24 and 25 are really intertwined. The reason they're separated is they propose to amend different sections of the zoning bylaws, however, they are interrelated, so- So the definitions in Article 24 are related to the subsequent Article 25.
So 24 defines, and 25...
Basically regulates, and...
As, it regulates as in where they can be located?
Right. If I can kind of give a little bit of background?
Please do.
Obviously, the state of Massachusetts was one of the states that voted to legalize marijuana usage for people with medicinal, medicinal problems, or medical problems for medicinal purposes. And back in March of this year, the state came out with their draft, the Department of Public Health came out with their draft regulations. Then subsequently, they came out with their final regulations in May of 2013. Now, at the spring town meeting in May, the town of Rehnham voted to request a temporary moratorium from the Attorney General's Office, which was granted. The moratorium read that it shall last until either June 30th, 2014, or six months after the final Department of Public Health regulations were issued, whichever comes first. And the DPH regulations came first in May, six months after that would be November 8th of 2013. Therefore, we're currently under temporary moratorium for these facilities that is set to expire in about three weeks, two, three weeks. Therefore, something, some action needs to be taken at this town meeting pursuant to that. Article 25 is what came out of discussions I had with the planning board, and Article 25 proposes to allow medicinal marijuana treatment centers in the industrial zoning district by special permit, and it also establishes 500-foot setbacks from various facilities, such as schools, churches, other religious uses, childcare facilities, family childcare facilities, parks, playgrounds, other recreational areas, et cetera. This was presented to the Board of Selectmen, and it was referred back to the planning board for a public hearing, which they had on October 17th. So that's, that's what Article 24 and 25 relate to, would establish special permitted use in the industrial district for medicinal marijuana treatment centers.
Let's just stay with it, because I think 26 and 27 also, right?
And to continue...
26 extends the moratorium through June?
Well, what came out of that was, after it was presented to the selectmen, Article 25 was presented to the selectmen, there was some interest shown in potentially developing an alternate bylaw to also bring forward to this town meeting, to give voters a choice of two different areas where this would potentially be allowed by special permit. However, I was not, my date of hire was not until August 26th, and by the time we developed this bylaw, and interest was shown in developing an alternate bylaw, there just was not the time to develop an alternate bylaw and do the due diligence for the discussion and the public hearings to meet Mass. General Law. Therefore, in conversations I had with the selectmen, I decided to, you know, it might be a good idea to request an extension on the current moratorium. And in the research I've done, many other communities, I counted at least 72 in Massachusetts that last spring received moratoriums of at least a year, some 18 months. So considering the fact that Rehnham is only under a six-month moratorium, requesting a six-month extension to June 30th certainly seemed to be a reasonable request. So these two articles are on the town meeting warrant to give voters a choice to either establish a special permit use in the industrial district or request an extension on the moratorium from the Attorney General's Office.
So it's either or?
It could be both.
Could be both?
It could be both. Potentially, if town meeting voted to approve both, we could have a bylaw on the books, but we could also request a moratorium to allow us to develop an alternate bylaw to bring forward in the spring, at which point discussions would be had as far as, you know, an alternate location for this, which could be in addition to or a replacement for Article 25.
So we define it, we locate it, 26, we ask for a moratorium, we ask to extend the moratorium. 27, we define synthetic drugs, is that...
That is, that is not a planning board-sponsored article, so I cannot speak to that.
All right, let's forget, let's forget that for a second, then.
Yes.
Okay. So does the planning board or the selectmen, do you intend to move all three, or, Joe, do you know, or...
Yeah, I think our priority is gonna be the moratorium first.
So take it out of order, you think, or...
Yeah, I think that's probably the correct one.
And if 26 passes, then...
We can have a quick discussion of dismissing.
Okay.
That would be an option to vote to withdraw Articles 24 and 25, if it is the town's desire to go forward with a request for moratorium extension, moratorium extension, rather.
Yeah, just putting on my, you know, the moderator hat here, I'm looking forward to, you know, May of 2014, and it's much easier to pass a new bylaw as opposed to amend a prior bylaw. So if the intent here really is to ask for the extension on the moratorium, I guess the only risk there would be if the state were to come down and say, sorry.
Well, and although I, after discussions with Margaret Hurley, with the Attorney General's Office, obviously, the Attorney General's Office can't pre-approve something.
Right.
They can't give us a guarantee. However, in my conversations with her and the information she directed me to on their website...
Yep.
It seems like this request is certainly very reasonable and within the scope of what other towns have already received previously, so...
Okay.
I have a high level of confidence that the Attorney General's Office would likely grant us the moratorium extension, however, as you said, it's no guarantee.
Okay, so whatever you all decide to do leading into next Tuesday night, if, maybe we could have a game plan as to who's gonna get up and speak about if there is to be dismissals or articles taken out of order? Perfect. That's all I would ask. So the town meeting goes smoothly.
Take them out of order, yeah.
Yeah. All right, very good. And then 27 is not, is not, is not...
Planning board.
No, that is not a planning board-sponsored article.
Randy? Who's, Chief? Chief Donovan? Synthetic marijuana?
Synthetic marijuana is kinda hard to define what exactly it is. It's, they've taken, we don't know, potpourri-type product, they write potpourri on packaging, I brought some with me tonight, and they're really cute in the packaging, and they tell you what's not in it, but they don't really tell you what is in it. And this is what's being displayed openly in at least one gas station in our town. You can see the Scooby-Doo on the packaging, it says it's potpourri. It's been treated with some sort of chemicals, we don't really know what they are, but they're cute, and in the back here, they write what's not in the packaging, because it's been banned by the federal government. So it tells you that it's not for human consumption, yet it's displayed with the smoking materials. And it does not contain JWH018073, it has this long list of the chemicals that were banned by the federal government. And in Massachusetts, mirrored the federal law, so this is not banned by state law. Our bylaw that I'm proposing here would do that and would stop this from being sold. Numerous health problems attributed to this, kidney failure, if you Google it, you can see an article about a young girl who smoked this every day for two weeks, and now half her brain doesn't work, she's in a wheelchair. This summer, there was a particular issue in Colorado with three deaths, there are still people in intensive care right now in Colorado, 75 people hospitalized after smoking this. And this is openly, right now as we speak, being displayed at a gas station in our town. Even after being told, remove that stuff, it's not good, we were told, let us know when you have a bylaw.
Could you hold that up? I think he's trying to, I think parents would be very, very interested to know what...
And this is right on the counter, right next to the peppermint patty.
He's coming in tight right now, just hold it up right in front of your microphone there.
Taunton banned it several months ago, the town of Middleboro has banned it, and I think that also kinda created some of the push here into our town of Rehnham.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Smells wonderful, too.
That's perfect.
So that is the basis of this. And interestingly, if someone drives around in a motor vehicle after smoking this, and we've had that here, where we've gotten a call of the vehicle all over the road, we stop that vehicle, and they say, well, I've been smoking my synthetic marijuana, they cannot be arrested for operating under the influence, because the operating under the influence statute says intoxicating liquor, drugs as listed in 94(c), section one, Massachusetts state law, and the vapors of glue. And this is none of that. So, yes, not a good thing.
There is a guarantee it's hallucinogenic.
They're treating it with some sorts of chemicals, and there's no real consistency to that. And this package actually doesn't even tell you where it was manufactured. This potpourri scam that's here, this package costs $20, and it's 10 grams. I don't, do they usually sell potpourri by 10-gram package? I don't think so. So, and that stuff is actually articulated in the bylaw.
Great. Questions for the chief on 27, synthetic drugs?
Yeah, ask that one quick.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna have a problem there, Chief.
Am I next to it?
Article 28 appears to be the background checks, fingerprints?
Massachusetts, in the last year or so, passed a state law that requires the chiefs of police to issue permits to operators of ice cream trucks. And in the law, it requires the chief of police to do a background check and confirm that the people operating the ice cream truck are not sex offenders. In order to do that, it says the chief of police is supposed to submit their fingerprints to the state and the FBI. Without a bylaw from our legislative body, the chief of police can't submit those fingerprints to the FBI, they will not process that check. So in order to allow me to properly conduct those checks and issue the licenses properly, we have to pass this at town meeting through a bylaw. The other professions or operations that we've listed there also normally have some requirements, whoever the licensing authority is, whether it's the chief of police, the selectmen, board of health, there's usually some sorts of requirements there to do background checks, but they predate the technology of being able to submit somebody's fingerprints quickly and find out if they've committed some crime in some other state. Currently, the best we could do is to check by name if they've committed a crime here in the Commonwealth. If they were on vacation, if while they were serving in the military, or if they lived in some other state, they've committed some offense, we probably won't get that information. So in order to conduct proper investigations of these folks who we have a public trust with, we would have to do that through fingerprinting, and that's why it's there.
And those listed professions are hawking and pedaling, or other door-to-door salespeople, owner-operator of public conveyance, dealer of secondhand articles, pawn dealers, Hackney drivers, and ice cream truck vendors.
Public conveyance, I've had questions on what that is, that's limousine, similar to the Hackney, driving a bus service, a limousine service, things like that.
Any library? Very good. Questions on Article 28 for the chief?
We're involved that we're gonna have to include fingerprints in some of the corner checks with teachers?
Yes, that is a different issue from this. It's a state law, and it's already passed, and, but it's a different issue, but it's a similar issue. For the same reason that I can't conduct a proper check right now without the approval of our town meeting, the way the state law was written, I guess, doesn't meet muster with the FBI in order to conduct those fingerprint checks that have been mandated by Massachusetts law. So far, it's not gonna be the responsibility of local police to conduct all that fingerprinting, because it involves every public school employee, every private school employee, every daycare, nursery, all those types of things that would overwhelm the police department. I hope, and I believe the state is gonna actually do that part of it, the actual work of the fingerprinting through a private vendor, but that system is not in place yet.
We're all gonna be fingerprinted at some point. I mean, really?
Well, I was just curious if we could ask that, but we don't, because you don't, we wouldn't want to...
Specifically, we can't.
Thank you, Chief. And then one more, we're gonna accept, motion to accept, a townway, the roadway known as Carriage Hill Drive. Questions on that, Article 29. So it'll be a pretty standard special town meeting, we will not be using the consent agenda, which if you recall from the spring, we grouped up a bunch of, you know, for lack of a better word, housekeeping items, and moved them as one agenda, that will not be in use. I've reviewed the warrant, and it doesn't appear to be anything that would, that I would consider to be, you know, general housekeeping here, everything is an article, it stands on its own. So we'll move through it Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the middle school, we'll start on time if we have a quorum, and hope to see everybody there. Any last questions on the article, on the warrant, I'm sorry, or on the town meeting process in general? Mr. Stolti? You wanna, you wanna correct yourself on the guinea hens, or...
No, I'm a little confused about the acceptance of this Carriage Hill Drive, because it was my understanding that they couldn't meet all the deadlines for this town meeting, so I'm assuming that this will be dismissed, but...
We're waiting to hear from you.
Okay, I don't believe that, they have their infrastructure ready, but I think there are some issues regarding the planning board that they missed the meeting on, and so it's really paperwork issues that they've missed. So I think this is going into May.
We'll look forward to that motion next Tuesday night, perhaps. Very good. Thank you all for coming, we'll see you next Tuesday.